Let's stand in the place, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public discussion. Do you have anything on public discussion?
All right.
Well, I just soon will wait for your road foreman.
Okay.
Because it pertains to that. Can that be better, right?
Yeah.
Just from last week, because I didn't catch everything on the computer. Or did he make them want a trailer? Was there a request for a trailer?
I need a divorce.
They had custodians wanting.
Custodians.
I know, but was there another one with me and I were in there? They wanted a trailer.
Hello, Doug? Hello?
Okay, okay.
It's up to their board. That's, that would be the mayor's.
Okay, that's not.
You'd have to go through them first.
Sure. Okay, I, I am.
Back because.
Yeah, I had, I had Laura May ask me about it.
Okay.
I couldn't remember what was discussed.
So, yeah, no, the mayor's, you're gonna have to talk about that.
Oh, okay.
And then I'll come back to hear. We don't, we don't originate that.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay.
USC.
We have the road foreman?
He's got it.
All right, I'll get you a minute here.
You guys got anything interesting?
No, they're trying to get the road a little bit of shape. Some gravel slick.
Yeah, well, good luck. Sunshine.
Yeah. Two hours do more than what we'll do.
Yep. Yeah. Well, they're a little tracky and. Yeah, but I kinda wanna save the gravel, so stay off of them.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, if you can do more harm, then good.
You'll see in the springtime.
Yep. This gentleman has something he wants to discuss with you.
Yes, I have numerous complaints in my neighborhood that we were plowed two days before Christmas and four days after Christmas. And we don't feel it's right. We have to open the roads so our neighbors can go enjoy Christmas when you have a job. It's your job, not our job, to open the road to make sure everybody gets to go to Christmas, so. They sent me down to do the talking, and if you don't wanna listen to us, they'll come back the next time, and I'll guarantee they'll fill the room, because I've had more than one. I know they've called you, because I told them to call you. Roger's got calls, I know he has. I know you guys have got calls. I know Doug's got calls. Your, your job is to plow the road. I know the old guys used to do it, whether it was Christmas morning, New Year's morning, it didn't make no difference, it got done. I've had my tractor plugged in since first of the year, and I don't think that's right. I don't need to plug it in to do the road. Then I hear they're plowing roads that nobody, we're not plowing roads nobody lives on. Got two people that live in the middle of four roads that nobody lives on. So how's that work? I plowed that road Christmas morning so those two couples could get out. And it hadn't been plowed for a week. So, somebody's gonna be accountable. We'll figure it out. You guys can figure it out. If we don't have enough employees, let's just keep going on, if there's more than you guys on the payroll.
Did you have anything for public discussion?
Nancy.
Nancy.
No, no.
No.
Sorry, I'm getting my phone turned down.
Okay. It would've come in a minute. Name. Anything else for public discussion? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda in amendment dated January 3rd?
Melissa, did you, did you see my email there?
Yes, I, I corrected that. I was just telling them that they are correct.
Okay. Perfect, thanks.
Yes.
Okay. I don't want, no, I'm not voting.
Pardon? To approve the agenda.
Second?
I'll second that.
Why? Is that how you say your last name?
Lefter.
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 Righter. Righter. Righter, okay. I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion here. Cassoot Regional.
Good morning, thank you for having us here on this, what looks to be a lovely day out in wintertime, so I'll let Colette do the finances. The most recent financials that we have, I believe, are in November.
Yes. Yep, yep, pretty, pretty much business as usual in November. Still seeing pretty high in pay, inpatient volumes up on our third floor. Really still a mix, a mix of stuff. Our, our, our providers do a great job of keeping the sick there and, you know, really feeling like we have the ability to care for those pay, those patients here instead of sending them out. Some, some, some are high, uh, clinic vol, volumes just due to pe, people being want to be seen by the end of the year. Looking at a pretty, pretty significant market adjustment for our staff here in Jan, January. Not as significant as the previous year. We're kinda seeing some of those wages even out quite, quite a bit, but we still have to be competitive with the mark, with the mark, mark, market, so some, some staffs still seem pretty significant wage adjustments. Some projects that we have going on, just finished up some wall, some wallpaper removal for infection control in our clinics and our third floor, so that was a good pro, a good project done. We had the public bid and hearing for our maintenance shed. That was received by Bob Becker construction, so we are beginning the process of that. I think with an ending date prob, probably some, sometime here at the end of 2012, 2023. And then just working on our bu, budget now for fiscal year 2024. Our year end is here at the end of June, so already looking at that for next year, I'm sure you guys are too. And really just he, he, health, healthcare is so unknown, it feels like at this time, just in terms of more pay, in terms of more patients wanting to come to the ER and not want, 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 wanting to wait to be seen in the clinic, clinic, clinic. Our providers do a really good job getting people in who want to be seen, but for, but for some, that's the ol, only way without insurance to be seen, so just contin, just con, continuing to work on that. And then just, it just feels like there's more and more sick people all, all of the time, so our inpatient volumes just continue to be at a high level whenever here we expect them to go, to go down, and they just don't, so. Any questions for me?
How do you think your budget's gonna do compared to last year?
You know, it's too early to tell yet. It, it truly is, so I would hate to hazard a guess at this point. As we roll in all the numbers, we'll get a better feel, but we're not there yet. Colette is meeting individually with each of our leaders to go through their individual departmental budgets, and as we roll those up. One of the things we're challenged with right now is getting a good forecast on the intentional numbers that go into creating some of the patient volumes. We're seeing higher than anticipated and higher than ever volumes in our inpatient unit, in our emergency department, in some of our key outpatient areas. And we don't know if that's just a fluke or if it's a long-term sustainable thing, so some of that, we know there was a little bit of catch-up from COVID, COVID-related activity, but some of this is, is completely unrelated. We know we've had some pediatric respiratory illnesses and adult respiratory illnesses again, and we're certainly seeing those. We've had essentially full inpatient census for, you know, a longer period of time than we would've expected. Our surgery volumes are still very high and very strong, so you'll have to get a better feel for what the numbers will look like, a better forecast.
Do you have some good and bad? It's good that you're busy, but it's bad that you're busy?
It is, right. It's great that we're busy, and it's great that patients are using us. And the bottom line is, we do have good coverage. You know, we have the patients in our community throughout the county using Cassoot Regional Health Center, as well as patients from outside of Cassoot County, so that's a great. And, you know, our patients appreciate the fact that we're there and, and respect us and, and use us, and so as we build upon that, one strategically, one of the things we're looking at is, you know, some improvement, or maybe an improvement with additional services, especially related to behavioral health. That's a significant need on this train. So.
Good.
How was that for a non-answer, essentially? We don't know.
It's kind of a riddle, we're not gonna date.
Yeah, we don't know, it's too early to tell.
Yeah. Wages are gonna be a big deal.
Wages are a big deal, and, and for you and for us to health insurance and, and other, you know, premiums are very high. You know, liability insurance is, is very high and just all of those kinds of things, so as all supplies are facing some individual supply issues.
Any other questions? I wanna thank you guys.
Hey, thank you.
I think my job's pretty easy today.
It's usually pretty, pretty easy. And it's gonna be easy.
Don, was Doug gonna come up, or are you doing it?
I, he knows about it. This is pretty brief, I don't know, but.
Okay, go ahead, Doug.
I think we just need a signature. A couple weeks ago, we met with Roamark regarding the employee work retirement plan, and they just sent the binder agreement that we needed a signature to authorize that, and then we'll start working on those employee meetings.
Okay. So, good. Do I have a motion for us to sign the binder agreement with our signature? I have a motion by flat. Second?
I'll second.
Second by card? Any discussion on it? Pretty straightforward. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion here, Jim.
I think I've got Mark with that yellow, we're gonna need to sign.
I'll let you finish this.
Bye.
You write better than I do.
Not necessarily.
I read it.
You might've got away with a little bit of declining. Mark Decine, I'm interested. You fit young today.
I brought my last paper, too.
Did you give me?
I'll bring my papers by after doing.
Okay.
Will you be around, or?
Uh.
I'll wait.
Pretty, and you want to give the money?
Well, we'll set you to go in. I don't know.
Okay. I'm still, still moving yet, no, I, I can.
Will you be here this afternoon?
I can, yeah.
Okay, I'll stop in for a minute.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Does anybody have an objection? We go to John Tolbert and let him do his.
No, it's fine.
Crack a few times.
That's fine.
Okay, sounds good. John, you want, we'll, we'll let you get done.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here and bring you all up to date on what we're looking at with the Drainage District Association right now. I know a question that has been on a lot of counties' minds that I hear a lot about, of course, is carbon pipelines. I don't know if you're in the path of any of them.
True.
True.
But the legislature's in session now, as of yesterday, and my understanding is there will be several bills offered this year that'll take various, various approaches to dealing with, I think specifically the Inmanis domain issue. Haven't seen any of those bills yet. A lot of rumors, but nothing in writing yet. But with the, with the pace of a legislative session and the deadlines they have, I would expect that we'll, we'll see bills start to come out pretty quickly, and I think we'll know probably by the end of January what those bills are gonna look like. And at that point, IDDA will make a decision whether we want to be involved in them or not. Want to register on them and be actively involved in monitoring. But I know there's a lot of concern about the Inmanis domain process, and I think the legislature's gonna try to address that in some way, shape, or form. I don't know exactly what else the legislature has on the, on the agenda for this year. Again, there's a lot of, a lot of news reports out in terms of some of the things they're gonna be looking at. With respect to drainage, we had a bill last year that was, sent about 500, that was authored by Senator Guth. IDDA opposed that bill, along with a lot of other people, a lot of other groups, and whether that bill's gonna be back or not, I don't know. I'm told that probably it will be. I don't know why they're expecting a different result this year, but we'll, we'll watch it anyway.
What was that bill?
What was?
What was that bill, or the summary of it, yeah?
Yeah, what it does, what it did, yeah, well, good question, what it did. When the, when the bill first came out, I read it four times, and I couldn't figure it out. And it takes two pages of drainage statutes and converts it into about 12 pages of statutes. And it turns it into a very complex situation in terms of notification requirements and business requirements. It sets up, you know, right now, all drainage districts are pretty much treated the same. This bill would've created different levels depending on aid groups. So, four different drainage districts in the same, same county could've had four different standards to meet under, under state law, depending on what size those districts were. It was very complex, it was very difficult to understand. When a bill comes out in the legislature, there are three things that a group can do. An IDDA is one of those groups. You can register in favor, you can register as undecided, you can register as opposed, or you can do nothing, and just say that bill doesn't impact us. On that particular bill, there were 30 to 40 groups and individuals that were registered, and not one that was registered in favor. So the bill has a lot to handle. So we'll be watching that. Another thing I'd talk about at the federal level, those of you who've been around a while know that this issue of waters in the United States has been sort of a political ping-pong game, that every time administration comes in, they, they change the rules on the waters in the United States. We had Obama, they put a rule in. We had Trump came along and reversed the Obama rule and put his own rule in, and now you've got President Biden who's come along, who wants to reverse the Trump area rule and put his own rule back in. There was a new rule issued the last month of, excuse me, the last week of December. Whether that's going to actually go into effect is a good question. There are two things that could happen. First of all, there is a U.S. Supreme Court case, it's called the Saccas case, which directly goes to the EPA ability to regulate water in the United States. And that case has been heard, there's a decision on it, expected early this year sometime. From what I've read, is if the Supreme Court rules in favor of Saccas and against the EPA, the new rule's gonna have to be scrapped, and they're gonna have to start over. So that's one thing that could happen. The other thing that could happen is what my expectation is, is that there will be lawsuits filed to stop the rule. Somehow, somewhere, they're gonna find a government that's gonna stay on it, and that will take its, you know, take its due process for itself, for court. By that time, I don't know, another new administration comes in and changes the rule again. This is ridiculous, it is, and it's true on both sides, plant politics with water quality. The new rule retains the concept of what they call nexes. And what that means is if, well, this little stream that I've got running through the back of my acreage is connected to a bigger stream, and that bigger stream is connected to a river, which is a water in the United States, so since that stream is connected to a stream which is connected to a river, that stream is also covered by the waters of the United States. The disappointing thing about the rule is it puts those kind of situations up for interpretation. So it's gonna be a case-by-case decision in terms of whether or not something falls under the jurisdiction of the water, yes. And depending on who you talk to in the EPA office, you could get a positive answer, or you could get a negative answer. And we, speaking for IDDA, do not wanna have a situation that creates itself where you all, as drainage district trustees, every time you wanna do a drainage improvement or a drainage repair, have to contact the Department of Natural Resources and get permission, because that potentially is a water in the United States, and that might mean clean water reform. So this is, this is gonna take some time to play out, but we will be watching it very closely. The last thing I'll talk about is, is something that, that we feel has saved drainage districts and directly the landowners in drainage districts quite a bit of money. So, going back three to four years, what the law used to say is that if you had a drainage repair in excess of $50,000, you had to give an engineer's opinion. I had a lot of counties say, you know, this day and age, $50,000 goes like that when you're talking about repairs. That needs to be increased. And we had some legislators that agree with us. And so they came in the session, I think this was three years ago, and looked at a variety of numbers in terms of, okay, what, what do you increase that to? And what they decided on was called the competitive bid threshold, which is something that has been part of state law for quite some time. So they tried that, they tied that to drainage repairs. And that is a number that is set by the DOT Office of Local Systems. And the beauty of that number is that you don't need the legislature to come back in and change, it was changed by the DOT. So, when that law changed, the amount rose to $139,000. So at that point, if you had a repair less than $139, you didn't have to have an engineer's opinion. What has happened since then is Office of Local System last year decided to raise the amount, and effective January 1st, that amount is now $196,000. So you can go up to almost $200,000 now on a repair and not have to have an engineer's opinion. Now, keep in mind, that's just a requirement, you can get an engineer's opinion anytime. You know, if you're going into repair and you, you know, somebody hasn't looked at that ditch for a while, or it's gonna be a little complicated repair, and you think you're better off getting engineer's opinion, certainly you can do so. You all know as trustees, that's gonna increase the cost of the repair, but sometimes better safe than sorry. So that is just a requirement, but January 1st, we're at $196,000, so I wanna make sure you're aware of that. So that's what I have this morning, if you have to respond to questions.
You guys got any questions? If not, thank you, John. Appreciate it. We'll see you on the 25th. Two weeks, two weeks from tomorrow. Yeah, in this room? Okay. All right, so, thank you. Thanks, you. The director showed that we received a report from the IDDA. And we'll go back to. Public and the tie, tie is a big tie, so after.
He took back around the corner, as best I saw. There he is. He wants to go that way.
Yeah. You're the one for the public employment relations?
Yes.
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 Yeah, you don't have to do this. We'll get Renee on the phone tonight, she requested close action. Yeah, thumbs up? Is that the one? We'll see if it comes in. We'll see if it comes in.
You need her cell number?
No, I haven't.
We just gotta have the number for a phone, phone wire.
What are you doing?
I've never dialed on here before, have you?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you just.
Okay.
Here, just, just push the new call.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. This is Renee Von Boker. I'm sorry, I'm not available, Red.
Go back to. Got anything else you wanna go?
Is she expecting us later on or?
I didn't, I didn't talk to her, so.
Oh, okay.
I have no problem with waiting. You don't? Wanna wait half hour and see if you can get back? Give me your cell number again. Hello?
Hi, Renee is on line three.
All right. Oh, she's here. Renee?
Hey, sorry, I couldn't point you up from my other call, picking up.
Okay. Hey, Renee, you wanted to go in close session, correct?
Yeah.
I would need a motion to go into close session pursuant to Iowa Code 21.51C, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
I hope so.
Are, are we able to go into close session without it being on the agenda?
Yes.
That would?
As long as, as long as the reasons are stated in open session.
The reason is, is we're going into, we want to go into labor negotiations with the bargaining unit.
Yeah, and the reality is, under 20.17, it's not, it's not something that falls under Chapter 21, so.
So, I have a motion by Mr. Flack. I'll second Mr. Flack's motion to go into close session. Do a roll call vote.
Flack?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Flacker?
Yes.
Stacker?
Stacker?
Yes.